So, within that timeframe, it notes that it would be cause for the City Council to rescind the zoning. On April 9th of 2008, Representatives of Suncor Development Company submitted a letter to the City of Goodyear, and this letter is included in your packet. The letter noted that due to the economic downturn in the real estate market, Suncor has not commenced vertical construction in Palm Valley Phase 9. And additionally, Representatives of Suncor noted that stipulation number 55 is not consistent with stipulations in place in similar P A D zonings requests in the city, and therefore should be removed. Staff is in agreement that stipulation 55 is not consistent with stipulations that are typically attached to P A Ds in the City of Goodyear. Stipulation number 55 is not considered warranted or necessary, and staff recommends that it be removed. Staff will not place, typically staff will not recommend this stipulation on zoning cases unless there's a specific need to condition the development timing of the property, or if there's other potential factors that could impact the zoning decision or the stipulations of approval. In accordance with the city's citizen review process, an alternative notification process was utilized because the surrounding properties were, because the subject property is not surrounded by very many properties, and the process involved mailing a notice to all of the property owners within 500 feet, and it included details and exhibits outlining the request. And staff has received one inquiry to this notification. I'm going to go back to, I don't know, one more time. Okay. Staff receives a phone call from Mr. Robert Fisher, and also Mr. Robert Fisher's legal counsel. And you can see here, Palm Valley Phase 9 is shown in the black dotted line. Mr. Fisher owns approximately 160 acres to the north. This is the square that is in red here, is owned by Mr. Fisher. And Mr. Fisher contacted staff and expressed a desire to have access through Palm Valley Phase 9 to his property. Mr. Fisher currently has access, but it is through a portion of Luke Air Force Base, and there are some restrictions as to the ability for him to access that. They've gated that, and I'm sure he'll talk more about that in a few moments. Staff communicated to Mr. Fisher and Mr. Fisher's representative that the Palm Valley Phase 9 P A D was approved in 2006. The zoning has been approved, subdivision plots for this area have been approved, and the case that is before the Planning Commission this evening is simply to, a request to amend one of the stipulations, and that's what the notice was for. And Mr. Fisher and his representative are here, and they would like to speak to you. And we also have Mitch Rosen with Suncor Development Company is also here. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Okay. Next person to speak is the applicant's representative. Would you, could you identify yourself, and do you?
I had a question for Brett first.
Do you want to have, oh.
I had a question for staff.
All right, okay, let's have a question for staff.
Brett, can you remind me where Luke Air Force Base was on the parcel or on the project? Were they in agreement? Because I'm trying to remember why, perhaps a reason for the stipulation, and a reason, you know, for wanting such a stipulation there in the first place.
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Lox, the reason the stipulation was placed there in the first place was due to staff oversight. The zoning ordinance that we have now contains provisions for that stipulation to be utilized for residential development that is not part of P A Ds for hard zone residential areas. So we would add that to those types of proposals. As you're aware, most of the proposals we receive are for P A Ds, and so that type of a stipulation is not appropriate for a P A D or a non-residential application. In this case, there was some oversight, that stipulation was transferred over to that staff report, and ended up being approved on there. So at Suncor, once they reached that two-year mark, recognized that stipulation, and then conducted some research on similar P A Ds in the area, and then brought that to our attention.
I guess my, or, you know, where I'm going with this is that I don't know, you know, adding this residential development so close to Luke Air Force Base, I don't know if that has anything to do or any impact at all in the long-term viability of the base, and whether or not closure, et cetera, et cetera. And so I didn't know if that was factored in to this, you know, for entitlement or something like that for the two years. And so maybe that, after that two-year period passed, and if there was no construction, that maybe the city would look for alternative zoning, for alternative land use for that parcel because of the base. If that makes sense.
Want to respond to that, Brett, or do Bob?
During the initial, during the initial, the rezoning.
Can you speak up, Bob, please?
Yeah. During the rezoning process, originally, and all the way through the council's approval, Luke Air Force Base did review and approve, and did have no objections to the rezoning relative to its long-term mission. So that was not, and that was not a factor relative to why the stipulation was there.
Okay. All right.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, since it's there, why are we requesting to just delete it rather than to grant an extension? Am I splitting here?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, as Brett indicated, one, it was, we really saw it as an oversight, and in action, one, that if we were doing today, that we would not recommend that stipulation relative to a P A D. And secondarily, although we did not indicate this in the report, that given Proposition 207, it is highly unlikely, if not totally unlikely, that the city would ever be able to rescind a zoning action once approved. So I guess what we're saying is, is you will not probably see that stipulation recommended by staff on any future applications unless there's a very specific need, and that this one was added more as a routine and as an oversight, and we don't see it applicable. And because of Proposition 207, it's really not something that we're going to recommend in the future.
Any other questions of staff, Luke? Any questions of staff over here? Okay. Next person on, that I have a card to speak is Mitch Rosen from Suncor. Pass that back to Joe, please.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Mitch Rosen. I work for Suncor Development Company. I believe you have my address on the submission card. First, I want to thank staff for their overview. I think they have succinctly described the situation. A couple of comments in listening to the Planning Commission's questions, I want to reiterate that we work closely with Luke Air Force Base in all of the processing of all of our property around Luke, and seek consensus in all of our developments that are impacted by Luke Air Force Base. Also, I want to make note that while we have not commenced vertical construction on the property, we have done substantial engineering work on the property, design work on the property. And as everybody, I think, is aware, the economy is not such that we have the type of companies that will go in there looking to go into that property now, so that's been the reason that we didn't proceed. I also want to point out that Suncor has had conversations with the adjacent property owner, and will continue to have conversations with the adjacent property owner. But it is, but tonight's action is that with regard to a request to remove this stipulation, that in addition to Prop. 207, I just, it's been my observation that that is not something that other properties within this community that have P A Ds have as a stipulation, and sometimes an oversight results in this kind of situation. So I'd ask for your support on removing the stipulations. Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. I have one card from a Mr. Clemmons, who's representing Mr. Fisher. Please come up and identify yourself, and pass that down to Joe, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and Mr. Chairman, thank you, commissioners. My name is Lat Selmins, that's C.E.L.M.I.N.S., and my address is 8171 East Indian Penn Road, Suite 101, Scottsdale, Arizona. And I am the attorney for Mr. Robert Fisher, who is the adjoining landowner in this particular case. If I may use what has already been provided, and we have a, we have the same document with some further description on it to identify what we're talking about. I also have individual handouts for the, for the commission. Palm Valley 9, Phase Roman numeral, Palm Valley 9 is shown on the Elmo. Mr. Fisher's property is immediately to the north. It's a 160-acre parcel of real estate, and it has been in the family since the mid-'40s. It's a longtime family owner of that particular property. Mr. Fisher is here in the hearing room today. When this property was originally rezoned a few years ago, we checked diligently with Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher indicates that he received no notice of the particular proceeding. He did receive a notice of this particular proceeding, and hence he is present here and expressing his concerns. The concern is this, that the 180-acre, 160-acre parcel is landlocked. There is no way at the present time that Mr. Fisher has legal access. He does have ad hoc, or from time to time, permission to get through and to a public way, and that is through the Luke Air Force Base, through a gate and so forth, but that is based on a permission basis. Luke Air Force Base and the military have indicated that that is not a legal right, but that is a permissive right from time to time to get to that particular parcel. The interest that we have here today is to ensure that that 160-acre parcel is not perpetually landlocked. That is the important part of it. If Mr. Fisher would ever see notice early on, he would have also registered that point because it is not appropriate, it is not fair for a zoning application to landlock another parcel. I know that there's some comment made about Proposition 207. This is the ultimate case of a Proposition 207 action, where someone landlocks another parcel. And if one parcel is landlocked, that means there has to be a mechanism to have access, whether it's for a park, or open areas, or for a golf course, or whatever other future use may be. But once that is done, parcel is landlocked, that does give rise to the 207 obligations, and I know that that was mentioned. The other thing that has been mentioned is that this was a mistake. Well, it may have been a mistake. I wasn't here in 2007, but I will just tell you that Suncor, everybody knows, is a very knowledgeable entity, very sophisticated real estate entity, with sophisticated people, attorneys that look at their land issues, and the staff is also very sophisticated in this instance. So when that limitation, stipulation 55, was put in, I think it was not an oversight by everybody that was involved, P and Z, council, staff, and the sophisticated people at Suncor. What I would like to indicate, another, this is another representation of the same parcel. You can look and see where the parcel is outlined in white. Luke Air Force Base has indicated the park, and Palm Valley Phase 9 is immediately to the south. What we, we have been speaking to the Suncor representatives, and Mr. Fisher is, as I indicated, a longtime resident of Arizona. He's a very practical person. He's interested in practical solutions on it. He's not interested in imposing undue hardship or cost to anyone else, but in this particular instance, it is essential that Mr. Fisher does have a legal access. And if this zoning process started all over, if this stipulation were not deleted, the zoning process would start all over, then in that event, necessarily and manatorily, Mr. Fisher would have access to a public way. I have indicated in pink what we suggest is the simplest solution to his access. We think it's a very small modification. We have the layout that was provided for Palm Valley Phase 9, which is the lotting exhibit. We suggest that there be access immediately to the north. As you can see, Palm Valley 9 touches, virtually touches, the property line. We think if we take a cul-de-sac that is at the north end, and that access be provided to it, I think that would be permissive. What that would require is Suncor to restate a few of the lots at that north end that I think should be a minor, minor adjustment to the lot sizes. And so we think we will continue to talk to Suncor, will be positive in dealing with it, but I ask that the following condition be put on this condition, that namely, that unless there is access, legal access, provided through Palm Valley 9, that this particular stipulation be not lifted, but rather that it would be enforced. So those are my comments on it, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Question, Commissioner Loretano.
I just have a question. To the right of his property, there's a munitions dump, and then Palm Valley, the Palm Valley parcel, there's a, that carved out for the munitions area. What part, who owns that other parcel, that part right above the munitions?
The two.
Right, right over here.
Yeah, I'm afraid I.
Could you put the, put this back on the other, on the Elmo, please?
Maybe this one. Let me put this on, I think that indicates, does that show, that shows Palm Valley 9?
You want the parcel south of the munitions dump?
Yeah, south of it, the munitions.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a better shot.
That's a better shot.
South of the munitions dump, north.
Here's the parcel there.
I think it's actually Luke Air Force Base, I'm not sure.
The Air Force Base owns all this property right here.
Okay.
They own all this property here, and then from here all the way up.
And they, I mean, they have control of Buller, too, then? Up there?
Yes.
To the north?
I don't see where Buller is.
Buller, David, who's on the northeast corner of the Fisher property.
Yeah.
Yes, all this, this is the munitions depot area, so this is all, all this is Luke Air Force Base.
Right.
I have a question. You said you've been talking to Suncor?
That's correct.
Okay, so I assume therefore there's still not a meeting of the minds?
That is correct.
Okay, and did they say why there's not a meeting of the minds?
Well, they indicated that they had to review our proposal further. We did not want to give them any, we did not want to impose any specific way that they had to redesign their parcel, and I think that they would have to provide access wherever is most convenient for them, and I think they were looking at that, and at the last time I talked to them, which is earlier today.
So my question is, for the last two years, you've been in discussions, or no?
No.
When did this start?
This started after we received notice of this particular removal of the stipulation, because it's the first notice that we actually received.
So prior to your notice, what did, my question is, what did you think was going to happen?
We were, we were expecting that the parcels would be developed over time in a reasonable way, that all parcels, this is a unique location, and with its proximity to Luke Air Force Base, it would have very limited uses, and we were looking at something that would be compatible with the overall development plan for the area. And so we didn't have any preconceived notions of it, but what we did know was that this parcel would not end up being landlocked, no matter what would happen in the ultimate rezoning and restructuring of the parcels in that area.
Mr. Clemmons, could you, Brett, could you come up, just share the podium?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, just wanted to make a note. Staff researched whether or not proper notice was sent during the Palm Valley Phase 9 final P A D, and we did find that we did send notice to Mr. Robert Fisher. The address for the notification in Phase 9 matched the address for this most recent letter that we sent him. So our records would indicate that we did send him proper notice for the P A D rezoning in 2006.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clemmons?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I have Mr. Fisher here in the hearing room on that particular point. I inquired about it at length, and he avows to me that he did not receive that notice.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Schlosser? I feel for Mr. Fisher that he has 160 acres that's landlocked, but I'm confused in that, I don't understand how, maybe staff can answer this, how the granting of zoning on a particular property can then landlock an adjacent property, where the relevance is between the two issues. I don't understand that. I mean, I guess my, my point is, Suncor may not develop this property for 100 years, just because they got its own regardless of this stipulation. I don't understand, and I, again, I feel for him for being landlocked, but I don't understand the relevance between what Suncor is trying to accomplish here and with their issue. Maybe you can answer that.
Well, I'd be happy to. The zoning process is a public interest process. That's why we have this particular body here, that's why we have public inputs. The zoning process is to help the entire area to get the highest and best uses compatible with the principles that are applicable zoning. And one of the things that is generally a point that is virtually always unacceptable, virtually always unacceptable in any zoning process, is to favor one parcel over another parcel and landlock a parcel. That has a material impact on the use of that other particular parcel. It has an impact in terms of utilities, water, sewer, access, and so forth. So it is not permissive for one parcel to be benefit at the expense of another parcel. And that's a fundamental aspect of zoning, and that's a principle that if there is any situation where anybody is landlocking another parcel, if this commission does anything, we had Mr. Coons indicate Proposition 207. That would probably be the poster child for a Proposition 207 claim, because you just cannot impact one parcel to benefit another parcel, because that's, the zoning process must go forward for the benefit of the entire community, for the highest and best uses compatible with the principles of that community.
I just had one other quick question. Is this? Wait, could I? Sure. Bob?
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond to that, because, you know, staff will disagree with two elements. I'm not sure.
two elements that's been stated. One, rezoning is not necessarily the process by which access or denied access would be considered. It would be more in the development process, subdivision plating, for example, where those things would be considered, not at the time of zoning. So he's right in part that through the development review process, but not at the rezoning time, because that's generally not considered. But it is at the time of subdivisions or site plans or other development processes. And secondarily, in regards to Proposition 207, gentleman's not correct, I'm sorry. Proposition 207 and the statute that was passed specifically does not provide the right of adjoining property owner to utilize Proposition 207 relative to a zoning they disapprove of. An adjacent neighbor, for example, neighborhood, for example, cannot apply Proposition 207 relative to zoning on adjoining property. Only the property owner themselves can claim through 207 that their property has been diminished in value, not adjoining property owners.
Luke, do you have a follow? I don't know if it was a question or an assumption. This, your property was landlocked prior to it being rezoned as well, correct?
Well, it was not landlocked before, it was because someone could roll a four-wheel drive or drive in and out of that, because it was open area in 1946. There were no roads at that particular time. There were no boundaries, there were no walls, there were no fences at that particular time. So over time, as you look at parcels, a large parcel sits out there, and you may say that there's no access, but one of the things of zoning, and I take a little different view, is one of the things about zoning is that someone has to come in with an idea as a part of the zoning. When you come in with the zoning, you don't just say, "I'm going to rezone it," and I won't tell you at this beginning where the homes are, where the streets are, and then you have to have at least some conceptual plan of what you're trying to do. So while the property was not landlocked per se, but normally what you would anticipate at long section lines on large parcels, that those would be rights away. That's the anticipation that would be there. If there's a section line or a half section line throughout the valley, throughout the state of Arizona, section lines and half section lines ultimately ended up being dedicated for ingress and egress. And so as a part of the zoning and plating process, everyone goes forward and dedicates, even in this particular instance, there will be some public roadways that will be dedicated. So I don't think it's appropriate to say it was landlocked before, and now it's landlocked thereafter, because the thing that landlocked it precisely was this particular process, because otherwise, as the zoning process unfolded, that necessarily has to be taken into consideration.
Commissioner DeBroer, Wester, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Would you put the exhibit up that had the painted road that you drew on there?
Okay, let me.
Yes, sir.
Let me remove that.
Now, are you talking with Suncor about that particular configuration?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner. We're, we'll suggest anything, we're not bound by that. This is what we, look, from our point of view, is the simplest solution to it. This is, so you can, as you can see, the cul-de-sac ends up very close to the northern boundary. It's really basically one lot that's impacted, and that gives you access to the northern parcel. So from our point of view, whatever is the simplest thing, whatever is the least impactful for them, that's what would be agreeable. But this is.
I'm going to follow up, there's a couple of more questions. Keep the exhibit up there.
Yes.
Now, if you go south and east, there's a black line that goes from your start of your cul-de-sac.
Right.
And it goes north and east. It divides that 4.1 acre and 3.2 acre parcel. If you look on your, on your map that you have right there, there's a black line that divides two, three pieces of property from that cul-de-sac. And my question is, if you were to access off of three parcels, parcel 1.2, 1.0, I believe it's 1.2, 1.14, and 1B, would that access, if you had a road off of the cul-de-sac that went following the black line, would that access the 160 acres?
May I do, may I do this, may I approach? I have extra copies of it. Maybe that could be drawn on there so I could visualize it a little better.
What you're saying is if you followed the lot line.
We follow the lot line.
Do you follow their lot line?
If we.
They draw the line road through there.
If they, if their perimeter boundary were provided, if that provided access over to the west, I think over time, that black line will become a public road, and that would be, that would be access if it came down, down south to Campbellback.
Well, what I was getting at was, number one, would you, if you talked to Suncor and they were agreeable, would that access your property, or Mr. Fisher's property?
Yes.
Okay, that's question number. Number two is, would you, what I'm concerned about is parceling the 4.1 acres with the, coming off the cul-de-sac to come into the 160 acres, you're actually going to be having one piece of the 1.4.1 acres that's going to be kind of worthless. And what I'm thinking is, if you would talk to Suncor and they would be agreeable, you could access off of that, that property line, so to speak, and access the Fisher property.
Yes, Commissioner, this is, this is just a proposal. This is, we're not, we're not committed to this, but anything that is doable, will agreeable to.
Counselor, your client wants to address the commission. You have to come up, please, please come up and identify yourself for the commission.
Robert D. Fisher, owner of the property. That, we just drew that on there, and I talked to them, and I said, I said, you know, this is not what we have to have. This is just a suggestion. And Jay said, well, we have to redesign this part up in here, that they'll try to work it in somehow. And that's about where I left it when I talked to Suncor. This is not in concrete or anything, it's just a suggestion. If they're going to redesign it, according to his conversation with me on the phone.
I guess my suggestion is, in talking to Mr. Ellingson and Suncor, consider that as a possibility with the least taking of acreage from anybody, and that's, that's an option, if it accessed your property. That's, that's my contention.
Okay. The chair is going to take a little prerogative and ask a staff question first. Are we under any kind of time constraint, Brett, to pass this revision of the stipulation tonight? Or, in other words, if we don't pass this tonight, and we give the parties a month to work something out and come back, are we going to, is there a violation of, you know, the original zoning, or are we in trouble?
Commissioner Gelsner, members of the commission, the two years has already passed, as the planning manager has mentioned.
So we just, the clock's just ringing up, okay. Can I, the chair is going to take it upon himself to recommend that we continue this case for a month, and I would like to see Suncor and the client get together and see if we can work something out and come back to us, because the commission has some concerns, but I don't think we want to deny Suncor the ability to keep marketing or moving forward. Mr. Rosen, do you have any problems with that? Yes, come up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mitch Rosen. As I've listened to the discussion tonight, I appreciate it, and I understand your position. From a practical standpoint, I heard a comment about limited uses on the property that's to the north of us, which is not something that we've talked about at all tonight, nor do I think it's part of what's in front of you this evening to consider. But when you talk about, or when the adjacent property owner talks about drawing a line on here, to access an adjacent property with limited uses, the things that we're going to have to take into consideration include drainage, access, bridges, retention, how that property is then going to feed into our property, what kind of impacts that a decision like that will make, whether there are other, there are other options that may be better or more viable. Those are the kind of things that we're going to have to consider. It's not simply drawing a line on a map and providing an adjacent property owner access. And so I would like to have you understand that, that it's not simply just drawing a line on the map.
We, I think the commission understands that, one, this is going to cost money to, you know, it's plotted, it's going to cost money to re-engineer or re-figure out drainage, et cetera. What we're at, what I'm recommending is that we give you a month to figure out something and come back to us without, so that Mr. Fisher is a little bit happier, and you're a little bit happier, and then we can get rid of this in three minutes instead of we've spent almost, you know, 45 minutes on it. So the question really boils down to is, do you want to take the time to do this, or do you want us to vote on it? And I'll, you know, I've read the rules, I can, I can actually make a motion, and I may have support enough to get a continuance. So the question is, do you want it, or do you want to go for the vote and see what happens?
Mr. Chairman, also, in addition to what Mr. Rosen had indicated in terms of what the road, the technical issues, there's the broader, I think there's the broader consideration when you think about, about this 160 acres that is so close to Luke Air Force Base, and are we sending a message, are we facilitating development on property that, and what kind of development are we going to facilitate on this property, since it is in the county, Aracopa County, it's not in the city, we have no control over it. So we need to think about the implications and its impact to Luke Air Force Base, too. So there's a bigger issue than just the technical issue.
I, I.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. However, I empathize with the applicant who theoretically was notified, or our records say he was notified. He says he wasn't notified, and he wasn't here two years ago when this case came in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fisher said he didn't receive the notice. The law requires us to mail the notice, it doesn't require us to hand-deliver the notice, and the law doesn't say they have to receive it, we just have to mail it to the address shown. I know it's specific, I know it's a little detailed, but we just have to mail it.
You'd like it resolved tonight. What it, I'm going to, let me, yeah, I want to, Commissioner Loretano, and then I'm going to get back to Commissioner Schlosser.
I just want to know, what can, the properties in the county, maybe, what can it be used for that close to Luke? I don't know, maybe staff knows. I don't know what, I know there's specific regulations. What can that be zoned for someday?
There are, there are numerous different things that would play into that adoration. And I guess I'll read them off. It's obviously first, is the property is within the 70 L D N noise contour. It is, a portion of it would be within the blast zone, as we refer to it, that's the curve line, of which, parcel, out of Phase Nine, that Suncor actually dedicated lands to Luke Air Force Base at Luke's request, because it's within the blast zone of munition storage. A great portion of the property that we're talking about, Mr. Fisher's, is also within the flood plain. I think there's a, in that result, there's a very, very small portion that would be devolvable, and that devolvable portion would be governed, if it was in the city, which it is not, by the city's regulations relative to proximity to Luke Air Force Base. It would certainly be non-residential, it would be very restrictive industrial, probably would be not retail, but it'd be low-intensive employment or storage-type uses because of its proximity to Luke Air Force Base. Mr. Chairman, if I might add one further thing as you're discussing this, I just want to remind the commission that your options tonight are to approve the request to delete, deny the request to delete, or continue it. You do not have the option to modify the stipulation, because that's not what's been advertised.
I totally understand that. Commissioner Schlosser?
He said pretty much what I was going to say. I think, I just want to make sure that we're not confusing the issues. Again, I sincerely feel for, for Mr. Fisher, but the question before the commission tonight is what, what he said, that we're dealing with one stipulation, not whether or not, and I have one question, not to ramble here. He said the words "landlocked." Do you have legal access or no legal access?
There's no legal access.
So that was my only point, is I just don't want to confuse the issues. The issue before the commission is whether or not we should delete the stipulation and not talk about legal access potential to other properties. And I appreciate what the commission's trying to do in helping out Mr. Fisher, I want to help them out as well. Okay, here's, here's the issue that comes up, and let's just take, talk about it from a political standpoint. If we pass, if we vote on the issue, and most probably it would pass, I'm not putting words into my fellow commissioners, however, all I'm saying is, then it's going to go to council, and there's going to be the same hullabaloo that we're going through here. So the question is, is it worth taking a continuance on this so that when it does go to the city council and there, and they are the enabling body, it can go through a lot quicker than spending our time with it? That's what I'm asking my fellow commissioners, and that's what I'm asking, you know, the representatives of, you know, both, both Mr. Fisher and staff and Suncor. Hell, let council deal with it, they can spend an hour on this, and they still won't understand it. Did he answer the question?
I have a question. I don't understand if we approve it, if we approve this deletion today, or if we approved it in two months. What's going to happen in these, in the next two months? Because certainly, we've already passed the deadline. So we're not in a pressure to make a decision today over something that I think needs further discussion. That's my standpoint.
Commissioner Schlosser? I'm sorry to cut you off. I agree with what you said. If we can help them out, one way or another, that issue's going to be resolved, but it shouldn't be convoluted between the two issues. That's my only point. I, I, I agree with you. The issue in front of us is a very clear-cut issue. And if, and if Mr. Fisher wasn't here discussing something that he should have been discussing two years ago, this would sail through the commission. However, it's been brought up now, and I think we should be dealing with the implication to it. Commissioner Lax?
Perhaps as an alternative, can staff agree not to put it forward to council?
Perhaps as an alternative, can staff agree not to put it forward to council until Mr. Fisher and Suncor potentially work something out? I mean, because if it's gonna, if it's gonna take a continuance here, and they work something out in a month, and it comes back and we approve it, and then it has to wait to go on council again, I mean, if they're gonna work it out in a month, can it wait to go on council for a month? I mean, whether or not we have to look at this again.
They'll be on vacation by the time it gets there.
Or, I mean, if we can get, you know, Suncor on the record to say, you know, we're willing to work something out, I don't know if that's gonna be good enough for Mr. Fisher and his representatives, but...
Mr. Rosen, what do you want us to do?
Yes, Chairman, the issue here is, I'm gonna just...
We know the issue, we want to know, what do you want us to do?
Well, what I, the issue here is that I feel like we're in a gotcha, and the gotcha is, we gotcha now, and we want to talk about how to get something from you, and the concern is, if we don't allow this, if we stop it now, oppose it now, then we may be able to get something that we won't be able to get in other circumstances. And I understand that, I understand as an adjacent property owner, the discussion that needs to happen is gonna require, for example, if you take it down the path of, you know, let's provide access to them, okay? Then, first of all, you gotta ask yourself what the limited uses that are gonna happen up onto that property is gonna be. Then the next step is, we're gonna have to have a contractual relationship about reimbursement for all of the access that's gonna be provided up to there, and we're gonna have to find out what, and it goes on and on about what it is that we're going to need to work through to try and figure it out.
But the question is, can you come up with a memorandum of understanding in a month? If you say yes, then we have an answer, if you say no, then we also have an answer. I mean, we don't need, we don't need a written contract right now.
Chairman, the answer is, I don't know. There is extensive discussion to figure out how to take an adjacent property and then decide whether or not it makes any sense to run through our property or not. The result may be, the answer's no, okay? So simply bringing us back together again in a month may result in the answer being no. I understand your position, I sympathize with your position, and it's your prerogative as to how you want to handle that. I understand that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're willing to work with Suncor. I agree that the issue today is removal or not removal of stipulation. In my view, if we talk about technical circumstances here, Suncor has way slept on its rights its past two years, it's all over, they didn't build on it, the condition is there, they've lost it. So in fact, what the right thing to do would be, is to enforce that stipulation and make them go back and redo the whole thing. We're not interested in that. Their rights, they have already slept on their rights, as has been pointed out, the two years has already passed, they didn't do what they were required to do. That was clearly in the documents, they understood it, they're sophisticated people, as you can, as I understand, and we can tell. So the right thing to do would be to enforce that stipulation and have them start all over from scratch. We're not interested in having them do that. We're willing to suggest a compromise, we'll work with them, and in the next few days, we're prepared to work, we'll start working with them tomorrow. But over the last week that I've been speaking to them, the response I got is, well, we'll talk to you. And the thing that it is, they'll talk to us after the process is all over. But in my view, I think, I would urge that that stipulation be enforced, that stipulation is self-enforcing, it's a two-year provision, two years has passed, and frankly, there's not much to do to lift that stipulation, because it's already vested. So, but we're not interested in pushing that point.
Last round of questions, Commissioner Schlosser.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear, I'm not defending Suncor here, they're a very huge, powerful company against this sole property owner, but again, I can't make myself any clearer, and I appreciate where you're coming from. If he would agree to some kind of a continuance, that would be one thing, but I don't know what they're gonna accomplish if it's a month, or two months, or a year. I want to help this property owner as much as everybody else on this commission, but we're confusing the two issues here. It's not gonna solve anything, and I guess to put it in not very fancy words, I feel that this property owner is holding Suncor hostage for trying to delete one stipulation that staff is in support of. And again, I feel bad for this property owner.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams?
No, excuse me, you've indicated that you have, I guess the term was maybe limited access through Luke Air Force Base?
Yes, we have permissive access, we have to go through a lock gate when they permit us to go through there. So they, Mr. Fisher has worked that out on a permissive basis, but it's not legal access. It's like somebody allowing you to, crossing over your neighbor's property. He's allowing you to do that, but you don't have a legal right to do so.
Is there an alternative, that you can go back and negotiate something with Luke to get a little better access, the access that you think you need to this limited-use property?
That is order of magnitude far, far more difficult than it is. I mean, we're dealing with the government process, we're dealing with military property, we're dealing with munitions area, we're dealing with this, so it would never be public access, it would be limited access to a person or two, or some other way, as on their current circumstances.
Have, in your dealings with Suncor, have you asked them to carry the burden of the load of providing this access, or have you offered to help them defray the expenses?
We're willing to work with them, we haven't committed a dollar number, we're willing to work with them. There are other things we have considered, such as dedicating some of the property to Luke, in fact, Mr. Fisher's considering that, so we're open to just about any, anything that's reasonable on it. And if I may add just one more thing on this technical point, that the question is, who slept on whose rights? Apparently, the suggestion is that Mr. Fisher slept on his rights, I would say this, the developer has failed to commence vertical construction within two years of city council approval. This approval of zone request shall be cause for the city council to initiate rescinding the zoning until extension is granted by the city council. That has not happened. So in my judgment, if we want to be technical about who slept on whose rights, they would probably not even legally have a right to reinstate a condition that's already been completed. There has been no vertical construction in two years, so this condition is self-operative, therefore, that's the ballgame. And so... Mr. Chairman, that's not correct, it's now not self-operative, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the stipulation only says failure may be cause for the city to rescind. That would be the city taking a formal action to submit an application to this commission, city council, to rezone the property back from PAD back to its original zone. And again, as I indicated earlier, that raises serious Proposition 207 issues. It's not self-operative, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, again, let me say, there are other alternatives available for access that haven't been explored and discussed because of this issue. The adjacent property owner here is indicating to Suncor, you need to give access to my property. There are other potential means to provide legal access to this current landlocked property that has been landlocked for a long time, one of which is, on the screen, on the west side of this property, in this PAD, that area in green is a tract, that tract is to be dedicated to the city as open space. A lot of it's in the floodplain, but that is to be dedicated to the city. There is a potential that an access easement could be provided by the future owner of that property, or the current owner, or the future owner, Suncor current, the city in the future, provide access from Camelback along the west side of this property to this gentleman's property, provide him legal access. If he wanted to develop his property to the north in the future, he could potentially use that legal access, improve a road down to Camelback, and provide, you know, paved access to his property. Those things have not been fully explored with, you know, with this adjacent property owner, and of course, and of course, annexed to the city, because he's not currently in the city, in conjunction with that. So I want to say that there are other potential alternatives, not just thrown on Suncor. In fact, as the property is laid out on the plat that's been approved, Brett, can you move the map down?
Move it to the right.
No.
Oh, no, move it. You want that map?
Move it down.
Down the picture, down the...
If you see in the north, that green area that would be park, extends all the way past those industrial lots. Really, without going into the munition, or the blast zone, Suncor's ultimate property won't touch this gentleman's property. It will be basically through the city park, or the city open space tract. So maybe this gentleman should be talking to the city, the future owner of that green area, that tract, for access as compared to Suncor. These things have not been explored as of the date. We're agreeable to explore those.
Last comment? Commissioner Miller, any last comment?
Once again, so my question is, so prior to, you're saying you just got notification a week ago, et cetera, so what has your client been doing all these years?
He's owned that property for...
No, no, in terms of right-of-way access?
No, he's just been, he's been there, he's been waiting for development to come along over time. We know it's a limited parcel in ways, we're looking at dedicating some property to Luke Air Force Base, where we have no development plans of any kind at this particular time.
So if Suncor had built within the two years, you would not be here, is that what you're saying?
Well, we would probably be in another forum.
Okay.
Commissioner Loretano?
I just want to say, we've been talking a lot about whose rights, who did what, just my reading of this is that the council amendment was approved on May eighth, two thousand and six, and Suncor prepared, appeared to have preserved its rights, because on April ninth, two thousand and eight, when they made their, within the two-year period, is apparently when they made their application to the city. So I don't think there is, from what I can read anyway, just from the notes that we have, it looks like they did come in within the two-year period to make an application or to talk to the city. So that looks like that's not a problem, that I would hit my head on either way.
Commissioner DeBrocker?
Okay. The chairman understands the issues, and the chairman would like to see commotion to continue this item for a month, so that when the parties come before P and Z, I don't care whether you talk to the city, I don't care whether you talk to Suncor, get it solved, because you don't want to do this in front of council, trust me.
Mr. Chair?
I'm gonna, hang on, I'm gonna close the public hearing, any commission discussion, or I'm gonna look for a motion. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we continue the, this item until the July sixteenth, I believe, of planning a zoning commission.
All right, I have a motion for Vice Chair DeBrocker to have a second. Can I make an alternative motion? Uh, you can amend, you can, sure.
Can you do a substitute to approve it, to approve the case?
How do we, what's the? You can't, we have to get it on the table, and then it can be amended.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So, do you want to second this?
I'll second it, so we can hear what the...
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second. Mr. Commissioner Williams, I believe you wanted to make an amendment to this motion?
No, I want to move that we approve case number oh-eight-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-four.
Bob, you can't do that.
You can't do that.
There's, because we have a motion on the floor, we have a motion on the table, and we need, and it's been seconded, and you can amend this motion to something else, you can amend this motion, and then we'll vote on the amendment, or we're gonna vote on
this motion that's currently in front of us. That's the way the chair...
Because if you do the substitute motion, it takes the place of the other one, and so that one, if we approved his substitute motion, that would wipe away the original.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not an expert in Roberts' Rules of Order, and I'm not sure the commission's rules discuss it, but generally, Roberts' Rules of Order say on motions to continue are, there is generally no discussion on motions to continue, straight to vote, and then another motion if necessary.
All right, I have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for, because I, I want, I ask for a roll call, both Commissioner Miller?
I...
Is it a motion to continue?
No.
Commissioner Loretano? Commissioner DeBrocker?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBrocker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlosser?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay, the noes have it, Commissioner would have voted aye, the chairman would have voted aye, so this motion fails by a two-to-seven vote.
Two-to-five.
And now I will look for another motion. Commissioner Williams?
I move we approve case zero-eight-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-four, amendment to Palm Valley Phase Nine planned area development to delete stipulation number fifty-five as recommended by staff.
I second.
I have a motion, and I have a second, all in favor, well, is there any discussion that we want to have? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
We have, the chair votes aye, it's a six-one, this motion passes. Sorry, boys and girls, this is gonna be ugly.
You'll have to work it out, that's what we get paid.
What?
Carol, say why.
Oh, could you, Vice Chair, could you give the reason why you voted nay?
It needed to be continued.
Or, thank you. All right, moving right along, so much for an early meeting. Let's see if we can dispose of this in a proper amount of time that it requires.
No longer we don't have Brett come before us.
I'm gonna open the public hearing on case zero-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-two, the American Bank Trust Drive-Thru Use Permit. Ms. Lacklander from staff is on the podium, take it away, please.
Thank you, Chairman Geller, members of the commission. The aerial folder you are looking at shows the location for the proposed AmTrust Bank. The site is located in the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace at the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. Here you can see conceptual site plan for the AmTrust Bank site. The site, this conceptual site plan reflects how the owner intends to develop the property. To the north, you see McDowell Road, to the east is Pebble Creek Parkway. You see the bank here, with the proposed drive-thru at the rear, and then a neighboring proposed Burger King pad within the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace. This use permit application for the bank with a drive-thru component is within the city center gateway overlay district. The city center gateway overlay district connects the planned regional center north of McDowell Road to the planned city center development at the intersection of Estria Parkway and Yuma Road. This bank is on the northern part of the city center gateway overlay district. This area is a primary gateway into the city, and the city established this overlay district to enhance the image of the community, promote and enhance surrounding adjacent land uses, and promote compatible land uses within the entire city center gateway overlay district. Banks with a drive-thru component are specifically called out within the zoning ordinance to require a use permit within this district. All uses with drive-thru components also require expanded review as part of the site plan review process. A strong tie to the corner is also required in the city center gateway overlay district, and here you see the corner feature that was approved with the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace final PAD, with the trel structure sign, and such, and things like that, pedestrian connections. And this, the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace was approved on January twenty-fifth in two Here you see a few conceptual elevations of the subject property. This northern elevation is what would be facing the corner, behind the corner element of McDowell and Pebble Creek Parkway. Staff is recommending approval of the use permit, subject to stipulations in the staff report. As proposed use is compatible with planned uses within the area, it will not be a detriment to surrounding properties or persons, the parcel of land is adequate in size, and will have sufficient vehicular access onto McDowell and Pebble Creek Parkway. onto McDowell and Pebble Creek Parkway. This concludes staff presentation, and the staff is available to answer any questions. Additionally, Art Ramirez of Ethos Architects is present to answer any questions as well.
Commissioner Lacks?
Um, Ms. Lackender?
Yes.
I'm curious about the, how this is going to fit in with, with the Burger King. You mentioned that right next door is the Burger King. How, how is the drive-through situated? Is the drive-through going to be, I guess, directly adjacent? Will the drive-through window to, is it going to be on the east side or the west side of the building?
Commissioner Lacks, members of the commission. The drive-through, you can see, the Burger King would be right here, the, the bank is here, and the drive-through is at the rear of the building. You would enter here and exit here. This was initially proposed with the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace final PAD as an orientation. It was not approved, it has to be approved with use permit, but it was, it was shown here so that it is kind of hidden from the neighboring streets.
But what I mean is the Burger King drive-through, not this one.
Okay.
I want to know where the Burger King drive-through window would be. I'm just trying to conceptualize in the center how the traffic is gonna flow with two drive-throughs right, right next to the other.
There is, there is, there is a small island with some trees and landscaping between the two. The Burger King window is, the pickup window is right here where that pop-out is. And the AmTrust Bank, you enter here, the windows are over here with the teller and the ATM.
And there are, from McDowell, is there a, I've seen a curb cuts on each, each side so that conceivably you could enter in, it's sort of hard to tell, on this side to go into the bank and somewhere else, or to exit?
There is not. There is a curb cut a little bit farther back, close to the Burger King entrance. There is not, it's, it's too close to the corner, there is not a driveway right next to the bank. This is a right-in, right-out only. This is left-in, left-out, right-in, right-out. And then these on Pebble Creek Parkway are right-ins only.
Thank you.
I have one comment.
What?
On, I just have one comment.
Go for it.
On the action form, on page five, the first paragraph, the bottom line, the last sentence, it says the planned hours of operation for the bank, not the restaurant, should be compatible with the adjacent commercial areas.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other comments? Other questions of staff? Chair has a question. I want to follow up on Commissioner Lacks. The drive-through for the Burger King, we have an exit right next to an entrance as, I know staff's looked at that. Has our traffic people signed off on this already?
Commissioner Gelsner, members of the commission, traffic basically looks at the exterior roadways and drive-throughs, or driveways. This was looked at a bit when it went through the, the final PAD process, and we have, we did look at it during this process. We asked that question a few times of the applicants.
Do we, do we have concerns?
Ms. Chairman, no, we have looked at, you're responding to the jack-in-the-box has an exit there, and then the bank has the entrance to the drive-through in proximity?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we, we did look at that through a development policy committee, and actually, this is actually not that bad of a situation. Actually, it would be worse if they were both were exiting.
Okay.
Parallel exiting would cause actually more of a problem than, than this reverse situation.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your expertise. Okay, no further questions of staff that I can see. Would the applicant like to come up and speak, or would the applicant like to, you're winning, stay where you are?
Yeah, that's a good job.
Okay, the applicant passes. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this case? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing. And is there any commission discussion on this? In that case, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 083000002.
I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano and a second from the vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, seven-zero. All right. Would you guys like a break, or we want to move right along?
Just leave right along.
Okay.
We just like to move right along, too.
That's fine. Okay, for those of you who are watching on the internet, we are back to item 7A, Rural Development Policies, and we welcome our friends who are watching us on the internet from Mobile. At least we hope that they are watching. Mr. Schmitz is gonna make the presentation. Take it away, sir.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, the rural development standards, we had brought to you once before, and a recommendation had been forwarded to the city council. The city council felt that they would like to have more review and more public input on the, on the proposed standards, or the review of the standards. So an ad hoc committee was formed, and we took the, and worked on it for several weeks, and we took the proposed standards down to Mobile and did this presentation, so I'm gonna run through it real quick and see if this, so, the, as you know, the Sonoran Valley was annexed March of 2007. Since that time, we had received several requests about additions or new structures, and we found that basically because our city standards are fairly strict, it, it didn't really fit very well with rural development. So we initiated the review, and we established, uh-oh, oh, there it is. I was watching that one. The ad hoc committee, and these are the committee members, we have three representatives from the council, Councilor Osborne, Lord and Cavalier, Chairman Gelsner, and Vice Chairman DeBrocker are on it representing planning and zoning commission. And then we had Tim Keenan from Montage Holdings representing the developer, a major developer in the area, Derek Jacobson, who is an owner and a resident in Mobile, and Kevin Atterbury, who is an owner and a resident of Mobile. Eddie, is, is the sound not coming up with this?
Mic.
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 Oh.
Do you have any sound?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right, this is the court, there's no sound here.
There's no sound?
There's no sound. I've been to a trial here.
Oh dang, and this, this isn't even worth watching then. But, this one had like.
We're gonna listen to your pearly words.
This one had like dueling banjos introduction, it would have been really good. Not, not exactly dueling, it was, it was country. Anyway, we emphasize that all existing uses are considered legal and non-conforming uses and can continue. Any changes in the standards would only apply to single-lot development, and all new development would still have to comply with the city's current standards. Most of the changes that we talked about are driven and would apply mostly to a small portion of the Sonoran Valley, but some of them are, would apply citywide. And this is the area in the Sonoran Valley where we focused most, and primarily even more so in the area south of 238, which is the diagonal roadway cutting across the map Legal access, it had a gavel going, so that would have been good. Currently, the current code requires that a applicant must show evidence of legal access for a new home permit. The change that we have considered on that is that we, we might consider a lesser standard if it's obvious that a prescriptive use has been established for access. We would still want to try to get the evidence of legal access, but we could be more flexible in, in some cases where it's difficult to document it. Roadway improvements currently, if you develop in the city, the roadway must be paved, supposed to have 33 feet of width pavement, curb, with curbs, and meet all minimum standards. What we are looking at is requiring improvements that are the minimum necessary to provide for public safety access and still be PM 10 compliant. So that's the, the type of change we're looking at there. Fire protection requirements, current code, sprinklers required for homes over 5,000 square feet, that's current requirement regardless of anything. For homes over 3,600 square feet, if access and fire protection water is not, is substandard, then if the house is over 3,600, it has to be sprinkled. And no sprinklers are required under 3,600 square feet. And in terms of proposed changes, there's basically none. There is some discussion out there that the, a sprinkler requirement may be part of the 2009 International Fire Code, and that may be something that'll come back up in the future, but it's not in place right now. Solid waste collection, the, the residents are required to pay for service even if they cannot be provided service directly at their property. There's instances where the access is not good for the truck to get down there. This had been kind of a, a source of contention. Staff from the solid waste division of the Public Works Department has worked with waste management to come up with a compromise that residents would be allowed to self-haul trash to the landfill and dump, I say for free, it's basically for no additional charge, one time per week, up to four times per month. They would still be required to pay their monthly bill as like every other resident in, in Goodyear, but they would have that option available to them. Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner.
Chair has a question. Do we have this problem anywhere in the rest, in the northern part of the city?
Not that I'm aware of. I have not heard it come up in that context.
Okay, thank you. This is not a public hearing, this isn't, this, excuse me, this is a public hearing. We are not taking any action on this, on this case. Therefore, feel free to ask questions as we go through this instead of waiting for the end. Commissioner Williams?
Then I have a question about solid waste, and it goes back to item number six on the action form, and it says 6A is each existing home and any new home is required to participate and pay for solid waste collection. Can't that please say is required to participate in and pay for solid waste collection and curbside recycling?
So noted.
It certainly can be clarified.
So noted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't mention at the beginning that we did send out notices to residents in the northern portion of Goodyear who would live in what would be considered a, more of a rural lifestyle. We sent out 168 notices. We thought we might get a few people here tonight, but as you see, no, no one is here.
We have two. Are you gentlemen here for this item, or just want to watch?
My apologies to the citizens who are here. I know them, I'm not sure they're here for this one, but that's okay. The current code is that new homes must have a potable water supply. The proposed change would be to allow hauled water only in those situations where a well is not feasible, and require some documentation of that. We would require new homes to have a stubout for future connection to public water in a, in a location that would facilitate that. One of the proposed changes was, was that the use of a new well would stop within three years once a public water supply is available, and that would be on anything, anybody that would come in from this point, well, from the point that that change would be made forward, they would sign a waiver agreement saying that that's what they would do. And then existing wells on property annexed after 2006, that have been in the city more than 15 years, would have to switch over within three years once the public water is available. And this was intended to be in deference to the people in, in Mobile who had wells, that they would not have to do this for about 15 years. There, there still were some objections to the concept, if you will, even, even though that we tried to make it for their benefit. This would have been toilet flushing, and that would have been really funny.
It's a good thing we don't have sound.
The current code, homes with septic systems are required to abandon those and connect to a public system within one year after a public system is available, and that is actually in the current code right now. The proposed change, we would divide, define available as being within 600 feet of the residents for a new home. So instead of just saying if it's available, we would say if you're within 600 feet, then you're planning on putting in a septic system, if you're within 600 feet, you should really connect to the public sewer, not do the septic system. And then likewise, we'd ask them to provide a stub, if they do have a, are allowed to have a septic system, that they would stubout for future connection to a public sewer.
Wait, these I back up, don't go, don't go away. Okay, Commissioner Williams?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at this.
Just, just for information, when, when you abandon a septic system, is there a procedure that you need to go through to decontaminate it, or, you know, I don't know, I don't know anything about them, I've never had one, so is, is there something?
Yeah, there are.
Do we need to spell that out? That they need to?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Williams, there is, there is a procedure that is specified through the Department of Environmental Quality about how you decommission a septic, pardon me? I mean, well, the county Department of Environment, whatever it's called.
So that's already in place, we don't need to spell that out here?
Right.
I have a question, Joe. When we talk about the 600 feet, are, and, and my assumption is that city water and city sewer is gonna run down the middle of a street, right? And if, if we stop 500 feet away from this guy's property, now does he have, does the city extend the line down the center of the street, and then he connect, he builds his, he pays for his own connection? Or are we saying, I mean, this is a policy that we're gonna have to come up with, are we saying that this resident who is 500 feet away from where the city water stopped is gonna have to pay for the city line to get to the, in front of his house, and then pay for his own?
That's, Mr. Chairman, that's correct, that, that would be the principle behind that, that the, that the property owner, rather than installing a septic system, would extend the city line down. Now, the only thing about that is, and I don't know for sure if we have recapture agreements, or if somebody on the other side ties on that he could recapture half his cost, and that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that, wouldn't, wouldn't private development get into the same recapture policy as we do with commercial development?
Yes, we haven't.
Mr. Kraus?
We haven't had too many cases like that, but yeah, well, there's, there's a cost recovery ordinance we have that would provide for that mechanism.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think when, when you make the presentation officially, would you remind us about the cost recovery mechanism for both the water and the septic? Because that's where we demand more than just running the line out to the front, and I think people need to know that the city has a cost recovery ordinance.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
On the item of manufactured homes, it's pretty consistent with what we had talked about before, the fact that they're currently not allowed outside of, or in the AU and AG districts. We would look at creating an overlay zone in certain areas, particularly south of 238, to allow manufactured homes subject to new design standards. Existing manufactured homes outside of the overlay zone would not be allowed to be modified or replaced, so if you're not in an overlay zone, we would encourage discontinuance of manufactured homes if they're, we're not gonna make them take them out, but if they decide to replace it rather than putting another manufactured home.
Yes.
The last item is, if it's an existing manufactured home inside the overlay zone, then it can be replaced, but they would have to comply with the new design standards.
Were you, were you gonna have a yellow brick road on?
I had a doorbell on that one, that's all I could come up with. This one had classical music going, so that would have been funny, too. Okay, the city has site-built design guideline, or design guidelines for site-built homes, but none for manufactured homes. We're talking about creating those specifically for manufactured homes that are a little less stringent than the city's design guidelines, but at a standard that is above the average of manufactured home. In terms of off-street parking, the current code says everything's gotta be paved with pavement or concrete, and parking must be provided. pavement or concrete, and parking must be provided, two spaces for single-family dwelling and within a garage. We talked about allowing unpaved driveways in Ag districts and in the AU district when it connects to an unpaved roadway. So if it's an unpaved roadway, they could have something other than a paved driveway. The unpaved driveway would still have to be PM 10 compliant, and that it'd have to be stabilized and potentially even treated for dust suppressant, with dust suppressant if, if, if the material used just still generated dust. And then we would, are talking about considering use of carports for meeting the required parking requirement instead of just garages. The keeping of animals, the current code, horses and livestock are allowed in the AG district with no limits. Horses are allowed in the AU district with no limits, but livestock require a use permit. And we heard from the committee saying that we should continue to allow horses, livestock in the AG district. There are certain setbacks that we, that are in the code actually now and that we would continue and maybe elaborate on. That we would continue to allow horses in the AU district, but we would create a standard of one per 15,000 square feet of lot area and subject to certain setbacks that are not in the code right now, but would seem to be prudent. That works out to be about three per acre. We would also allow certain types of livestock in the AU district, but once again, limiting them to one to 15,000 square feet and subject to setbacks. And then a new requirement that would be introduced would be that if they have horses on the property, they'd have to provide them with some type of shelter shade. Okay, that.
Wait, go back to the animals.
Go back to the animals? That would have been a cow mooing.
I have a question. I'm looking at page seven of our, of the staff report, and it talks about hogs, donkeys, roosters, pigs, and burrows are not permitted. And yet, every time I drive up and down Bullard Avenue between I-10 and Van Buren, there's that burrow, multiple burrows. How did they get there?
He's, he's part of his property is owned AG, and it was understood that he was going to have that livestock there.
Okay. The other, the other thing that I, I remember the committee talking about educational school projects, you know, like 4H and Future Farmers of America and Raising a Hog and Raising a Cow or a Goat or whatever, and we have no provision in there for this. And, and we specifically had talked about the, the use permit, which was like a $750 fee and having some kind of reduced fee for these type of educational projects. And I don't see anything in it, and I want to know where we stand on that.
It's, Mr. Chairman, it's not in there specifically as you just talked about, because what we're talking about is actually allowing the livestock by right, subject to certain limits. We haven't fully defined which livestock would be appropriate, but if we just allow their livestock with certain limits, then it wouldn't be necessary to go to the necessity of creating this provision that it's an agricultural, educational project type of thing. It's just permitted.
So, so, so we're still in the process of defining what livestock is?
That's correct, because what we basically need to do, and I think, as I was going to indicate, one of the comments that we had gotten in Mobile was with respect to chickens.
Yes.
And so that's something else that we're going to kind of need to think about and figure out what would be the best way to approach that. If it would please the commission, I'd like to go ahead and I'll just run down briefly some of the comments that we got from the folks in Mobile. On the solid waste issue, I've kind of already touched on that. They seem to be receptive to the idea of the compromise. They did also have some concerns about a, having the ability to dispose of excess trash. As you know, in the balance of Goodyear, you have a bulk pickup as well as the container pickup, and they wanted, they were wondering about that. Waste management in the city, they do place a container at the school, and they, and they were putting it out there, I think, like on Thursday and picking it up on Friday. The people said the container was too small, it would get filled up too fast, and that it was hard to get the material over there during the week. Weekend would be better. Representatives from both the city and waste management were there and said that they would work to try to resolve that, perhaps by placing the container on Friday, picking it up on Monday, maybe using a larger container. So that was a productive point that was discussed. On the water issue, as I mentioned, there was an objection to ever having to abandon any private wells once they're established. People are concerned that they have significant expenditure made in drilling the well in the first place, so there, there's definitely a reluctance to support that notion. They were also questioned whether or not if they had to discontinue the well, the city would purchase their well or their water right. And that is, that is something that we probably would not ordinarily do. Because the type of well for a single house is, doesn't really help the city much in terms of a type of a well that you would sink for public supply. It's just, it's tiny, it's by comparison. Waste water, some of the residents questioned the, the connection within, connecting within 600 feet, and then they also asked about whether they'd have to pay impact fees if they were required to connect. You know, this, this is an issue that, you know, when you think about how would sewer lines or even water lines for that matter ever get extended into, into some of these areas? Now, there may be areas where somebody's going to develop a piece of property and then they run the line by, in which case they would, to, to connect, they would have to pay their fair share of the cost of that and impact fees. I mean, that kind of goes without saying. If nobody's going to volunteer to run the line down the street, then the only other way that it's likely to happen is through a special assessment district. Or there's a possibility perhaps someday, maybe that community development block grant funds might be available if the area is in fact eligible in terms of income or something like that, where some of those costs may be deferred. But the fact of the matter, even in a special assessment district, the, the impact fee type of a cost potentially could be rolled into that assessment, and so then they would have to pay it, but they might be able to defer the payments over a period of time. On the question of keeping animals, there were some comments about the restrictions being placed on keeping of animals. One resident said she had built a chicken coop but didn't have any chickens yet and still would like to get some, so that was a source of concern. There was a concern about, you know, if somebody had a piece of property within the AU district, which is one acre minimum, but say they have 10 acres, you know, how many animals would they be able to have on the 10 acres? And there is one gentleman down there that has more than 10 acres, has considerably more than 10, and has been keeping cattle on it, and is more of a kind of a ranching operation. So the response to him, though, was that he would, he would, could maintain what he was doing as a legal microforming use, of course, and even replace the animals because the use of the property has already been established. But I also had some discussions with him after the meeting. He's talking about building arenas and other types of things on the property. You probably need to go through some type of use permit or something before we approve that. And then there was a question raised about the open range law and how it applied to properties now in the city limits. They were looking to the city perhaps to help enforce something with respect to cattle wandering around the area. And the fact is that the open range law that applies with property in the county is the same when it's in the city. It's, if it's open range, then it's the property owner's responsibility to fence animals out. It's not the responsibility of the animal owner to keep them out of the people's property, so. Then lastly, just in general, I felt the meeting was pretty positive. Most of the comments were, they were, they were certainly at least civil, and they were in most part constructive. And the, there was a couple of questions raised about how people were selected to participate in the committee, and there was a desire expressed for some additional members to participate, so we'll be contacting some of the other residents down there to include them in the next meeting. We'll probably schedule a meeting about two weeks out with the committee to visit about what we've learned and where we go from here. And I guess with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Questions?
There's questions.
Commissioner Schlosser?
I just had real two quick ones.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the domestic wells, I tend to agree with those property owners and their concern, that if they have a domestic well, it's like 35 gallons a minute, whether it's 15 years or 50 years from now. If they have it, they should be able to keep it. I think that would be reasonable. For any future new homes, I think from a city standpoint, that would be reasonable. But for any existing, they should be grandfathered in. My second comment, being a former 4H member and FFA member, I know you said there was no, no fees or anything, but I would certainly be opposed to any fees that these kids in 4H or FFA would have to pay. I can tell you that with the few exceptions, these kids, for a pig, for example, they spend four or 500 bucks on their project, and it gets to the, to the auction at the end of the fair, and they're lucky to break even, so. I don't think that, didn't sound like that was going to be an issue anyways, but.
Chairman Kelsner, Commissioner Schlosser, we're, we certainly already heard those types of comments, are planning to take those into consideration, and it's actually been moving in the direction of just figuring out a way to allow the additional livestock without, but protecting adjoining property owners who maybe aren't interested in having livestock. So we're going to try to figure out a way to balance that and not require the use permit if we can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, questions?
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Loretano?
Commissioner DeBrocker, who actually went to the meeting?
Just a quick comment. Should there be an item in there on the whistles or the Union Pacific? When we were standing outside and there wasn't a crossing and there was this tremendous amount of horn on the locomotive, should that issue be addressed?
Chairman Kelsner, Commissioner DeBrocker, I want to say not if we can help it, but I guess it's something.
That's a very good answer, because we do not want to go for a quiet zone. Not out there. What, I'm sorry.
No, I, it, it is a topic of discussion elsewhere throughout the country, and I, I don't know that it's, it's one of those things that the train's been there and now we're bringing the people in, and, and so, you know, how do we, how do we balance that? As far as the railroad's concerned, they'd be pleased as punch if we put every, all the crossings, you know, underground or overhead so that they didn't, wouldn't have to blow the whistle. And, and so the railroad crossings are going to, it's going to be an issue that's going to come up again. Hopefully, the horn blowing won't be an issue, but the, there are some existing roadway crossings, as you know. I mean, we took 83rd and drove down that way, and I'm assuming that's why they must have been blowing the horn.
Well, he, he was way past, he was way west of, the train was way west. I just made the.
Maybe there was some of that open range animal stuff going on, so.
That car is a long distance.
They don't have cow catchers anymore on the front, do they?
There are, no, there are plenty of both public and private crossings in that area, and unless there are gates and lights and everything else, the railroads will blow their horns. And if the city would like to provide a, the infrastructure to have a quiet zone, then the city can pay for it and apply to the FRA for that, and I think there's a, I personally think there are a lot of other things that we could spend our money on than doing a quiet zone in Mobile. That's my opinion.
I didn't bring it up.
I'm sorry. Vice Chair. As a railroad, or former railroader.
I'd get a response.
I love the whistles. Any other, any other, any other questions of future planning manager Schmitz, long-range planning manager Schmitz? Seeing none, I'm going to close this here, the public hearing, and thank everybody for their participation. I can't wait for the next meeting. And the last item of, next item of business is any staff communications?
Two items, Bob or Joe have something. Follow-up from the Palm Valley Phase 9, the.
Oh, good, thank you.
Mr. Fisher and his attorney. The staff will commit to meet with Mr. Fisher and his attorney before it goes to city council and try to work out access to his property, so it doesn't become a.
Do you, do you envision possibly, since the city is going to get that property, that we're going to grant the legal access?
We can grant an easement.
And then let him deal with building a road if he needs to, or?
Yes.
But we would have to annex him, though, right?
Yeah, we need to talk to him about, about that, and we need to see what the county, what the county zoning is and what kind of restrictions the county would have on the property, too.
We're going to have conditions, too.
Yeah, we'll have conditions.
Oh, no, 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 that, that's excellent. I mean.
So we will meet with him and try to work something out before the council meeting. I think that was an excellent, excellent suggestion and irrespective of the action that was taken. The other item is, at the request of the chairman, I did invite a representative of King Ranch, well, representative of Elmond Companies to attend our next meeting on July 16th, and he'll do a presentation on kind of what their vision is for King Ranch and where they're going with King Ranch.
Great, thank you so much. All right, any other?
We only have one other item, I think, on that agenda, and that would be the Estrella Region 3 that was continued, I believe.
Two other items.
Two items. Oh, we do have a amended site plan for Estrella Falls for the regional mall. West Core has been talking to us about making some changes.
Is this like for Macy's or is this other changes?
Two primary things. It's moving Macy's closer to the.
Street.
In the center of the action and relocating a road around Macy's instead of in front of Macy's, and then redistributing the open space and creating a different public open space area, so. So you'll look at, that'll be coming July 16th, too.
We can't wait.
What do you mean you can't wait?
We are eagerly waiting for, to see that.
Bated breath.
With bated breath.
All right.
Any other?
That's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Yes.
No, I saw today, I noticed over just north of the freeway, there were signs for, I think it's Fairfield Inn and their suites coming soon. When is that going to start? Do you know?
I don't know what the status of their plans are. I know this is the, this is on the power center site of West Core.
But that's a good question to ask next meeting.
I can, I can check and see where we are.
We've approved the site plan, I'm not sure. There are those two plus one other hotel. Maybe we can give you an update on some of the hotel projects.
Are the hotels part of the main West Core Mall, or they're part of the Power Center?
Power Center.
So, so they actually will happen sooner rather than later?
I don't believe.
Like in time, not in time for spring training this year, but time for spring training when the Cincinnati Reds get here.
Possibly. I don't believe where they've submitted construction drawings, because I have to sign off on all the development fees, and I think I would have heard about that one. I'm sure I would have heard about that one.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn, so moved.